All right, it is seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the meeting of the board of selectmen to order first item of business pledge allegiance. And ask the deputy first selectman to lead us. All right, we have two members in the board of selectmen who will not be joining us tonight. Selectmen Baker and Selectman Lordell. Are not gonna make it, so we are three members present, two members absent. First item of business is the approval of the meeting minutes from June first, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting. Second, motion has been made and seconded. Are there any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Next is the board of selectmen's special meeting from June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Um, I have a correction on page five for my selectmen's report. Said Sarah Musker reported that she had attended the CCM grant writing conference. That's not correct. It's the East Windsor Greater Together Community Fund. At the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving, um, given by Kathy Randall, who's a member of that committee.
Correction is noted. Are there other corrections?
Move to approve the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three Board of Selectmen's Special Meeting Minutes as amended.
Is there a second?
A second for discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanna make sure that, um, this virtually was typed out as regular meeting and was crossed out, but special. Was it corrected on the website?
Well, it will be when they're posted. They're not, they're not final, except for us, so we will.
I just wanna make sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
If that was early this time. Three spikes and a hot one.
All right. Uh, public participation is one of two opportunities for members of the public to address the board of selectmen. If you'd like to do so, please identify yourself by name and address and state your business. I'll first ask if there's anybody here in the room. I don't see anybody online, other than Peggy, if she wants to say anything, but. Is there anybody here who would like to address the members of the board? Asking a second time? Asking a third time? There'll be another opportunity later in the meeting. Peggy, is there anything you'd like to say?
No, not yet. I'm waiting to the end.
Uh, we have a couple of communications. Uh, first is a thank you note to the town from the Network Against the Mess of News. Now just don us the network. Um, they sent us a thank you note for our twenty twenty-two contribution to their work. They do tremendous work. Um, and it was nice to hear a thank you note for it. Um, sir, is there anything you wanna add to that? I know that's an issue close to you.
No, um, I'm in close contact with Karen O'Connor, um, talking about ways that the town can get more involved and in helping and grant opportunities for them and stuff, um, but they're very good with thanking for donations, so I'm glad that we received this.
So that's, uh, first communication. We have two proclamations. Uh, one is designating the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month. Uh, and the other is proclaiming July twenty-first, twenty twenty-three as Park and Recreation Professionals Day. Um, for the record, I'll read each of them. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the town of East Windsor. Whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature with positively, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities, uh, by providing spaces for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education. Whereas Parks and Recreation programming and kitchen activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. Whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. Whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas the town of East Windsor recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation's, uh, resources. Now therefore, I Jason vows it for selecting the town of East Windsor to hereby proclaim the month of July twenty twenty-three as Park and Recreation Month. Second one, um, whereas the town of East Windsor recognizes that Parks and Recreation field is the, the Parks and Recreation field is a diverse and comprehensive system that improves personal, social, and environmental and economic health. Whereas the town of East Windsor recognizes the importance and benefits of Parks and Recreation services that enrich the lives of its citizens and help make this community a desirable place to live, work, and visit. And whereas the town of East Windsor supports the skilled work of Park and Recreation professionals to strengthen community cohesion and resiliency, connect people with nature and each other, and provide and promote opportunities for health, healthful living, social equity, and environmental sustainability. Whereas the town of East Windsor values the essential services that Park and Recreation professionals and volunteers perform to provide recreational and develop developmental enrichment for our children, youth, adults, and older adults, and to ensure our parks and recreational spaces are clean, safe, inclusive, welcoming, and ready to use. Now therefore, I Jason vows it for selecting the town of East Windsor to hereby proclaim July twenty-first, twenty twenty-three as Park and Recreation Professionals Day. That's it. Um. We have no resignation for appointments or new appointments at this time. We have no unfinished business. Moving on to new business ninety A, um, we have in front of you documentation that will reduce the bonds that are held for phase one of the West River Farms development. Um, it will, it would reduce the bond currently in-house by seventy-four thousand dollars to eighty-six thousand dollars for phase one of that development. Um, the project has been reviewed by the town engineer. You guys have any questions, you can speak to those. Um, but it's been reviewed by the town engineer, confirmed the work still needs to be done. The, um, costs in current dollars associated with that work and adjusted the, uh, amount of the bond accordingly. There is a correction that needs to be included here. Um, first, you'll notice on, under the beneficiary, it refers to a former employee, so we have two options with this, if we asked to move forward. Um, the first is that we reject this and ask them to submit a corrected one with a rejection motion. The second one would be to accept this and send them a letter notifying of the change. I, I'm not sure there's a difference in timing, but we do wanna just correct the record with who they're sending this to, uh, to whom, to whom they're sending it for attention purposes. Um. We could, we could change it to something that says something as simple as planning department staff, or we can make it the, um, current staff person of record for historical purposes.
I personally think it should be rejected and then sent to us properly.
Who's the bank?
It's banks, and it's M and T. M and T Bank is the bank of, of record, and those are the two options for correcting. We, we asked, we called them and said, can you just send us a corrected one? They said, no, you can either reject it and we'll send a new one, or you can send, you can accept that with, uh, a letter requesting that it be changed and a new copy be provided.
Then I would rather have it corrupted. Um, if it's not gonna change the timeline.
I don't think it is. I think, I think it's a true, six and one half thousand dollar.
And I'm glad you wrong. Thought that because I talked to somebody today and asked his name, and said we've got a meeting tonight, and I'm not sure who this person is, so.
Uh, those doors are locked, probably.
And can you close the doors, please? We have a clock. So is there a motion to, uh, reject the note from M and T Bank and request a correction?
Move to reject the, uh, note from M and T Bank regarding West River Farms and ask that it be corrected, addressed to the proper person or department.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So.
Okay, what would we, why would we, why wouldn't we just make that a department, one department rather than individual name?
So there's, there's two ways to look at it. One is the department that is, it's going to be the, the planning department until the bond is released. The alternative to look at it is you can actually use the, the staff person of record as a means of marking a point in time. Um, so.
Maybe that's what he would do.
You wanna, you wanna put it as Danielle?
No, I would not have a name associated with it.
I can amend my motion to just.
No, no, you don't have to run the motion. We'll, we'll, but I'm just saying for future, you might wanna check into that. I'm just concerned with liability for the individual.
Other than identified anyway.
Yeah, but if you don't want him for me, do you wanna go for it? I wouldn't if I wasn't doing so.
True story. All right, I'll have a listen. Okay, we are on to ninety, discussion and approval of the bid for, uh, one ninety-five to fifteen Wells Road to include the town engineer. Good evening, sir. How are you?
Living the dream. Did, did you, did you all get a copy of the, oh, you did. Thank you. Good. So, this is really pretty.
They actually, do you have a hard copy of it?
I do not.
You have, you have one, I heard.
I just saw that. Cause I wasn't sure if it's gonna get through.
Yep.
Thank you.
Um. We have a project and a little drainage issue we wanna fix. We put it out to bid. You can see the bids. We have a low bidder. He's an accepted contractor. We wanna hire him.
Can I ask what the story is with tobacco and sun? Like they're.
You know, I met with them today about the one that they were low on.
I don't know.
I tried to make up. I don't know what they were thinking. I honestly don't know what they were thinking. I, I I would ask him, but I didn't wanna seem like a jerk. You know? I thought about it while they were sitting across the table, but only, yeah.
Well, they one of our preferred contractors.
Who? Tobacco?
Tobacco.
Well, they're doing two, they're actually doing the playground at the park, and they're doing another project on Wells Road. Down the road from this, which.
Question was, are they on our preferred list of contract?
No, no, they didn't, they did not, uh, they did not apply to do that.
But, but the, the bottom two bidders are preferred vendors for this type of work. Roller Cut and Holden.
Yes, 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 they both are. And they're very close, but Roller Cut's low. And, uh, he's, yeah, I'm good with that. He's, he's done other work in town for us. Um. Um, I, I would. I, I guess I would respectfully request in the future, if, if we have something like this where we're going to work with the low bidder, if I could just work with the first selectman and get these agreements signed so we can, we're like two and a half or three weeks out because we had to wait for the selectmen's meeting to sign the agreement.
I don't think the charter allows that. I think we need to have the board of selectmen sign off on contracting issues.
Maybe we can change the charter.
We'll see.
It's just, it's a timing thing, really. But in any event, here, here we are tonight. And here's what we have. And, uh, we'd really like to, this has been, uh, a problem for a while, so we'd really like to deal with it and get it done and let the excitement begin.
Questions or comments on the recommendation?
No, I'll move to award the bid for the one ninety-five to two oh five Wells Road Drainage Improvement to Roller Cut Construction LLC in the amount of thirty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So carry.
You went tomorrow morning, boss?
Yeah.
Cause I also prefer you to sign.
Um, catch me or?
Okay. I will.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, um, we have been asked by the American Heritage River Commission to serve as fiscal sponsor for grassroots grant award, uh, which is for the installation of benches. Uh, Mr. Sherman, good evening. How are you?
Well, thank you. Hopefully you are too.
Of course, okay. Wanna tell us a little bit about the project?
Okay, so grassroots fund um, gives out money. Um, two possibilities. One is, um, a startup project, or one to complete or improve a project already started. So I applied. And I honestly didn't think we were going to qualify because they really focus on, um, groups that are more diverse than we are, although we are um, six females and seven males, so we're almost even there. Um. Age-wise, we're, we don't really fit, but anyway, they granted us most of what I required, or what I asked for. I asked for thirty-six hundred dollars to, um, pay for six of these benches, which are recycled, um, material. Um, and they granted thirty-two thirty. We'll make up the difference, the three hundred fifty-six dollars difference, um, either out of our budget or out of our donation funds. Uh, but we're not able to handle any money, so I need the town to be our fiscal sponsor. There should be minimal work to be done. Um, we're putting in one request for all six. The check will come. Ta-da. And I send a report, so.
Yeah, I, I noticed that, um, one of the requirements of us is to just provide, you know, an audit, which we do anyway, and you guys are included in, in those audited financials, so. Um, we've, we've done this for other organizations, serving as the financial sponsor. I mean, it is a de minimis obligation in terms of staff time. It's a great opportunity for them. Um, so if you guys are amenable, I need authorization to sign the agreement between town and the grant, uh, the grassroots fund.
The paperwork is on Melissa's desk.
You've already got it, yep.
So, um, the only decision that would be needed is to how the money was coming here, whether it was gonna be a check or a deposit, so.
Yeah, most of the stuff we do is electronic now.
Not, not my project.
We'll make a motion to allow the first working Jason Bows right to enter into, um, the agreement with the American. No. With. Um, grant for the town of East Windsor to be the fiscal sponsor of Saturday.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just curious, where will the benches be going? Do you have a plan already?
No. We had two benches previously. One's been washed away. The other one was in very bad shape. Um, it's been repaired somewhat. Um. We're going to try and find places where they're not going to wash away, but they will be secured with augers to hopefully make it less likely that they will wash away. Um, that river changes constantly. Um, if you go down right now, be difficult walking past Bridge One.
Hmm.
So, um, it's something, somewhere along that trail, um, possibly some of the benches will also go on proposed trail across the walkway, what we're calling the Blue Tip Trail. But I can't tell you right now where we're actually going. As I said before, I didn't think we were gonna get this grant, so I, it's a long shot. We did. And so the worst part is that we've gotta figure out where to put them.
As a volunteer, I recommend you for taking an initiative to apply for the grant because most people would have just ignored it, so. For those teams doing that.
I thank you. We did talk to DEP. Um, I told her what I was proposing. She was okay with it. Um, she did ask, um, what we were going to do originally. I was considering the benches like the town's using. She wasn't really thrilled with that. Um, and I found these. Um, and this is very similar to the bench that's in front of the Five Quarter Cupboard.
Yeah.
Okay, and it's also at, um, Middlesex Community College. And it stands up very well. That's truly in the sun and gets a lot of views, so. Um, and it'll be brown, which is what the state uses as opposed to green, so everybody should be happy.
Further, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I'd ask that we postpone till the next meeting, discussion, agenda, item nine D.
Move that we postpone agenda item nine D until our next meeting.
Okay, question has been made and seconded. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Um, we're on to nine E. Okay, so, um, I'm gonna actually ask that we table that until after executive session.
Move it. Go ahead, Mary.
Make a motion that we table item number nine E until after.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nine F, discussion of the agreement between town of East Windsor and the, uh, Afsmi Council for Local Thirty-five Eighty-three Police Union. Um, so the union has ratified the contract between town of East Windsor and the collective bargaining unit for a period to end, uh, in twenty twenty-five. Um, so I have the, the, we discussed this previously in executive session when we were still doing the negotiations. I have a term sheet if anybody wants me to go through it. Um, but, um, I think you all are familiar with what we're talking about.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
We'll make a motion that we enter a agreement, agreement between the town of East Windsor and American Federation of State Counties and Municipal Police Local Thirty-five Eighty-three Police Union, um. Effective July first, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, straight executive.
And allow.
And allow, uh, first of all, Jason Bows to decide.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? I just wanna say that I appreciate the, um, the agreement that we were able to come to. I think that is fair for all parties. Um, and that I appreciate the union's willingness to, to resolve some long outstanding things that I think will move the department and the town forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. I'll get with even president. Um. So. We have the, um, renewed engagement letter between the town and Holden and Conley. We discussed this as well. Uh, I need authorization to sign this.
Make a motion to allow, um, the board of first left men signing the agreement between the town of East Windsor and Holden and Conley, um, engagement letter for town council services dated June the twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Selectmen's, so I'm sorry, tax refunds.
Move to approve the tax refunds totaling three hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So. No, or this. Um, I wanna start off on a sad note. Um, last month, Bob Peck passed away. Uh, Bob was an active member of East Windsor Ambulance Association since nineteen seventy-eight. Um, not only was he a fixture on the ambulance, but he could be found almost every morning for years in front of East Windsor High School, um, wishing every student getting off the bus, good morning, wishing them a good day ahead. He was a wonderful man, and we offer our condolences to his family. Some additional sad news. Um, on June twenty-second, East Windsor Rotary Club held their final meeting after fifty-two years. We thank them for their more than half century of service to the town of East Windsor. It made an impact through the hundreds of members they've had over that time and through their countless community service projects. On behalf of the town, we thank them all, uh, for the work that they have done. On June twenty-fourth, the town held our second annual rabies clinic, uh, right here in this room, actually, because it was raining. Um, this free service provided an opportunity for fifty-eight dogs and cats to receive their rabies vaccine, um, at no cost. And we're, that we were also able to register an additional thirty-eight dogs. We wanna thank the Fenton River Veterinary Clinic for partnering with us once again. Um, next Sunday, which is a change from the original scheduling, but next Sunday, July sixteenth, the BMX Skate Park will be hosting their annual rubber duck race. The American Heritage River Commission will be hosting their annual cardboard boat race. That was changed from what was going to be this coming Sunday. It's now going to be next weekend because of, uh, weather and, um, bacterial levels in the, the river. The festivities will be at Trolley Crossing, which was formerly known as the Filter Beds, beginning at noon with the rubber duck race starting at one and the cardboard boat race starting as soon as the, uh, rubber ducks are released. I wanna extend congratulations to our newest sworn police officer, Britain Dixon, graduated from the Police Academy on June eighth, and to our newest sergeants, Zach Sherman and Chris Sheehan, on their promotions last month. Just a reminder that the town's second annual passport program is underway now through the end of August. This is a great opportunity to support local businesses and possibly win some money while you're doing it. So, but that's what I have. Marie, what do you have?
Um, only means that I had scheduled Economic Development Commission. They have shown all the, uh, postponed meetings on a regular basis due to lack of form. Um, I also had three meetings on the same night, and I chose to go to the Board of Finance meeting, um, because we were on the agenda. Uh, so I didn't attend the, uh, Park Hill, uh, meeting there, but they had nothing, but I haven't already stayed into the book. Uh, and the only other thing I have is, um, I was made aware, um, by somebody that, um, the Library Association is looking for two members, one to replace Al Floyd and one to replace uh, another individual that, uh,
Cindy Miller.
Cindy Miller, thank you, um, who's moving out of town, so, um, if anybody's interested in that financial, uh, background, uh, please contact the library. Uh, let them know that you're interested, that you know who you're interviewing, and say whether or not you'll be accepted. So if you know anybody, pass the word.
We're helped to finish, like.
We're helped by that. And certainly.
I did not have any liaison meetings, and everything that you mentioned is uh, what I was gonna mention basically as far as the passport program and, uh, rubber duck race, so.
Uh, public participation is public second opportunity to address members of the board of selectmen. If you'd like to speak, please identify yourself by your name and address and then state your business. I'll first turn to folks who are in the room and then give anybody who's online the same opportunity. Yes, sir.
Point, share, read, need to go straight. Two things came up in the, in the meeting. One of them was the, uh, old sin of us, over where else, kind of, terrible, but looking at this, that. The second one was the, um, the old mill, um, which I think takes a little bit more precedence because it supposedly has contaminated soil there. Is that right? Why are we just sitting with this? I mean, that, that we could be dying from this stuff, can't we? I mean, seriously. How do we know that it's not spreading somewhere else or, I, I, I know that a lot has been done with it. I, I know that, you know, a lot of people have it, their eyes and, and down there and listen to people and saw it and everything, but what's the next step here? It seems to be idle and just it's concerned, very concerning to me.
There's a lot of, there are multiple parties involved. There's a lot of litigation and, and administrative approvals that are taking place. There is progress being made on it. Uh, but none of it is, is able to be voted on at this point. And also it's not our property. Um, so, so we're the third party in, uh, a lot of that.
It's not our what?
It's not our property.
Correct.
Um, so the property owners and state and federal agencies and the town, several state agencies are having ongoing conversations about that, but there isn't anything that is.
Ringing somebody's bell with this? I mean, something that people in town can do to help, or?
Uh, there, there is not. It really is. We're, we're a party to it, but we're not. We're, we don't have we're not the owner. We're not the owner. We're not the authority. Um, but that falls to the state by consent. DEP, ECD, EPD.
What about the Health Department or something that is related?
Not that I've had had conversations with. It's, it's been DEP and these. And EPA, but.
There's gotta be rats.
I'm sorry?
Rats. That, that would get.
None that have been reported.
That would get of interest, I'm sure, in rats or, or, or. Who could facilities right up front there? But G person just sitting there like a time bomb.
Yeah, it's, it's, well. As soon as I'm able to share more, I would be happy to do so.
I would be so.
I don't know. It's not, it's not a task. Uh, it's with state agencies.
Who, who are we directly contacting from East Windsor?
Well, we're working, we're working with the owner of record. They're consultants and state officials. We're working with the owner of record, their consultants and state officials.
Okay, what about the uh? Sinners? I mean, that could be a nice place or, oh, Old Depot or something like that, right?
Uh, again, that's private property interest and the private property owner is not interested in selling it. Um, at all. Um, of course. However, in the state budget, um, we have seen an increase in our uh, P Block grant for the next two years. Um, so the town will be receiving an extra million dollars per year in state funds to make up for the lost tax revenue, which you actually do the math out. More than makes us whole to the lack of um, construction on that property to date. Um, that's not, from my estimation, that's not a final solution, but it is a good step towards uh, remediating the impact. So, and, and actually two million dollars and eat, uh, one million each in the next two fiscal years.
Possibly in those years or something, they have.
I hope, you know, yeah, we hope, thank you. Anything else from members of the public?
Just clarification. You said yourself something that happened soon. And you agreed. What am I missing? I thought they put it up to sale with that caveat that nobody's gonna, gonna want to buy it. Actually, she's just gonna sit there and you're gonna hold off nine and a half years.
Right.
Um, so. I just to make it clear, I don't want anybody to think that there's something going on and next year is going to be unified because it's not going to be. Um.
That's true.
Yeah, so it's not going to be unified, um. Our former committee is making some ridiculous dumb things that have caused an accident. God said we don't have a warning, so. Love us to do anything. It is what it is.
Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Sam Upmarket Kings Court. I have a curious question. How do you approve of the wines for the? The park last year, is that a carryover to the next year? You approve of a lot of wine or beer that people call it?
The, yeah, um, that's, that's approved by the board of selectmen, annually with dates specified.
So it has to be done every year or is it?
Yeah, yeah, and on the application form, you have to specify the date of the function, whether you're private concern or the, the town. And once a year, Department of Recreation Director submits an application to us. It's approved by. Um, planning and zoning, the chief police, the fire marshal and the board of selectmen. Indicating the dates of the summer concerts. If, if there's an event falling outside of those dates, that, that prohibition remains in place. Um, it shows no waiver for the dates specified on the application.
So that hasn't happened yet this year?
It has, yeah, it happened in maybe.
April.
Okay. Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
What is the item nine?
Um, it, a ninety is a discussion of time carryover request from Chief Matt Harlock. It, it says a discussion of time carryover request for Chief Matt Harlock. For the second time, yes, sir.
I'm just curious, does that make you responsible for his beer and wine?
Any winners do?
Which responsibility is it overall that this beer wine has been?
Not being sold. It is absolutely not being sold. We cannot sell. That's, that's clear. We can waive the prohibition on consumption on, on town property, specific town property, but with the approval of the board of selectmen. That's been in the ordinance since we were in existence in nineteen ninety. We absolutely, under no circumstances can sell out. Okay, um, is there anybody online who would like to address the members of the board of selectmen? I see it ended up. Please identify yourself by your name and address.
Bob Leach, thirty-nine Church Street. So my, my question is, is uh, what exactly is the East Windsor Police Agreement on item nine D?
Uh, that's a contract matter that's not ready for, for our public discussion about that.
So no idea what that contract consists of, who, who it affects or anything like that?
Not that it's ready for public discussion at this time.
Okay.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, the motion would be in order to go into executive session to include just the members of the board of selectmen. There will be action afterwards.
Move that we go into executive session with just the three members of the board of selectmen that are present.
Motion has been made in seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose up there. We are in executive second at seven fifty-five. It is seven fifty-three. We're out of executive session. Uh, we're going to take up agenda item nine. Last page. Nine E. Uh, no, I'll do it. Um, is there a motion?
You take up that agenda?
Take up agenda item nine.
We take up agenda item ninety at this time.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carry. Uh, we are on agenda item ninety, a discussion of time carryover request. Uh, between town and Matt Carl, Chief of Police. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the memorandum of agreement between the town of East Windsor and Matthew J. Carl, Chief of Police. Regarding the carryover of previously accrued vacation time and authorize the signature of the first selectman.
There a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. No further business before the board of selectmen. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move that we adjourn at seven fifty-four P M.
There a second? Motion has been made in seconded. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at seven fifty-four P M.